Four, is the current sewage system capable of dealing with the increase of toilets, guest house, and the studio? Five, parking could well be an issue as Grinnell Street is quite narrow, especially at the top of the hill near Ms. Blackwood's home. What is the plan for overflow due to limited driveway space in the row of trees lining the street? Six, the fact that putting a guest apartment only feet away from the existing space used by the Haywoods over their garage will completely block the river view. I'm very tired of hearing from people who are self-serving that change is necessary. I have no problem with change when the change is good for the many, not merely one. I worked on the rank of Hamlet Council for many years for plant and constructive change to benefit the community as a whole and to save the small-town way of life, which was what was appealing to so many for coming here. I'm asking that we proceed with caution, as it would be truly a sin to not preserve the beauty we all share, the Hudson, because we failed to get vital but missing information. Thank you all for your time and consideration.
Mike, let me just comment one thing in that letter. You were concerned about the ridge being down. One of the things that the lady who owns the property said, "That's one of her favorite things and she does not want to touch it." So, taken from her, I believe her, because I gested with her and said we could put a billboard on it, you know, graffiti and stuff, and I thought she was going to chop my head off.
And I also have a series of letters from Robert Haywood. And I don't know if you want to read them or if you'd just like to comment.
I think I'll comment. The letter's written in part of the record. My name is Robert Haywood. My parents, Harry and Amy, live at 66 and 606 Grinnell Street, where they've owned a historic home for over 50 years. And my grandfather, who decided there before them, married up in the house. And our concern is the direct impact it's having on our view, and of course, the strongly reported, so I think it's a blind look. And I have to walk into it through the impact it's having on the view. I find every, respectfully, every rendering, every picture I've looked at has been differed, and it doesn't give me the confidence that I hope I will obtain before this is approved in any form. But when you're at my parents' home, in the upstairs bedroom, you'll look right down on the south wing. If you're on their patio, where they spend a lot of time, they're looking down on it. My father's wingback chair, he's 84-years-old, where he sits and looks north, it's magnificent. And I think Mrs. Blackwood's being modest with her description of the view, okay? It's much more than that. It's autumn splendor. It's owing my parents' view, and I wouldn't minimize that at all. It's not a slight view, and it's not a seasonal view. It's a magnificent expansive view. And I just ask the board to think very carefully before you would overturn codes that are in effect to protect views and neighbors, to create something that's unalterable, okay? So, from every point in our home, this building, the south wing will obstruct the view. And today, the pole in which I thanked Mr. Sowers for suggesting that, it's much worse than I thought when I saw the pole. It's much more intrusive. And I wouldn't try to perspire on that against anyone. I'm looking, if they had a question, my parents, again, they're unable to be here. I'm speaking for them, but also for myself. Our fancy lawyers were architects. It's people who've worked very hard for that home, and enjoy it, and I hope that they can enjoy it for the remainder of the years to come. Regarding the garage apartment, the addition on the proposed garage will completely obstruct the view from the garage apartment, from the ditcher window, from the windows on the north, and from the porch. So, my point being is that this is not a seasonal, minimal, slight view whatsoever. It's a magnificent view. Again, we're in awe of it, and we're thankful of it every day. I don't think a day goes by where we don't appreciate it. And it's hard for me to imagine walking back to the home and seeing that go on. I have pictures going back to the 1800s that show the view. There were some in the 70s that show it completely open. I want, in one of them, we have Easter bunnies, I have a popular board tonight to show. But that view has been open and available for generations, and would like it to remain that way for generations to come. I'm also concerned with the, again, as far as the garage apartment goes, there's just no question that this is an obstruction. And I think we should be in a position where we value one view over another. I hope that this works for Mrs. Blackwood, that she deserves, and I know she appreciates and respects that view. And I hope that she can achieve that view without obstructing anyone else's. I just don't like the sense that I've been getting over the last few meetings that one person wins and another loses. I don't see why this can't be put together in a way that certainly is fair to Mrs. Blackwood and all her neighbors. This is not fair to my parents. It's not fair to take away something that they worked hard for, that spent there for generations, and it's difficult to listen to that view being minimized, okay? It's very important. But I'd like to speak truth to that, maybe truth of power in this case, but certainly truth. I'm also concerned about the impact from the river. The view that was shown certainly doesn't look too bad. I'm wondering though, going in and out of the Rhine Cliff Dock my entire life, and what that would look like looking south at the house. And again, Rhine Cliff from the river is beautiful, and it looks like the quaint historic hamlet that it is. My dad grew up there, can go through the village, almost every home, and tell stories about who lived there, what the nicknames were, and up and down through the hamlet. I can do the same, and I have to say, for the most part, although many of the homes have evolved, the people have respected the architecture, they've changed, but I can still identify the home. And I think that's wonderful, and probably very few places in the country where that's the case. But I'm happy to say that I can do that. And I do worry about the fit of the modern architecture within the community and hamlet. That is a concern. I apply, because it just doesn't seem to me to flow with the overriding character of the historic district. That's something I think is very important to respect. And again, I think that this should be about respect to the neighbors, the people in the community, that people don't have to lose for someone else to win, and that everyone's needs can be met. But I just do not think it's fair for this to rise up and obstruct. And after seeing that pole today, I feel a block of view that's valued and charged, but that's remained for my parents and for people for generations to come. Thank you.
I think just in terms of the pole being up and whatnot, because I was at the ZDA meeting when that was discussed, I think that members of the planning board, rather than just a formal visit, can certainly feel free to drive along Grinnell and take a look at this for themselves and see what they think. That might be helpful for all of us to do that, because clearly, I think the view issues are ones that keep coming up here, and I think that's the sort of thing that we'd be probably all benefit from taking a look ourselves individually. So, we won't have a quorum, we won't have a meeting. So, thank you.
I think one last comment, too. Again, just being honest here, Mr. Mensch, when he showed the panoramic view for my parents' house, I felt that, again, it is that magnificent, but it minimized the view to the north. And I just feel the same view you can take from any home, including Mrs. Blackwood's, and you'd see that same beautiful view that she enjoys. And using that logic, you could probably say then, what is the need to build a unit that would face the north if you had that beautiful view in front of you? And my sense was that you were presenting that in a way, to say, "Well, the Haywoods have this magnificent view, why are they concerned about the northern view?" And this is how I felt about that, so I wanted to stress that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. One more letter has been handed to me that I will attempt to read. Oh, you have it, too. Okay. Lisa A. Bootenhoff? Is she here? Hope I got that name right. Okay, I'll read this into the record. "It has come to my attention that my neighbor plans to expand and construct a new wing on her property and also put an addition on the existing garage. This concerns me for several reasons that I would like you to consider. I have lived at 66 Grinnell Street and rented an apartment from the Haywoods for approximately six years. I cannot express to you how much I enjoy the serene river views and the changing seasons on the Hudson River. I am so lucky to enjoy this beautiful scenery from virtually every window in my apartment. However, if this construction were approved, I would lose the entire northern view. The proximity of the garage now is less than 10 feet, and I would instead be looking into someone's window instead of enjoying the river. I enjoy the yard in the nicer months as well. I sit on the riverbank and read, 'Have friends over or just taking the view.' This would drastically change. Rhine Cliff has had a special place in my heart for many years. It has a charm that goes back for hundreds and hundreds of years. The narrow streets, the Hudson River, and the architecture of the houses is truly unique. I believe this construction would seriously affect our hamlet, and ask you to consider the many others, both who live here and don't, it may affect. I thank you for this consideration and your time." Other comments from the public? That ends the letters. Yes. And I'll just ask you if you could come up to the microphone, because the camera's not moving and...
Might we put the model in the Senator's room?
Sure, sure.
Do you have a camera? Yeah. Put the model on.
Do you want to see the riverside, or do you want to see...
And I stand corrected, Fred is here, so...
Shall I read my letter?
Yes, please.
Okay. Dear Mike and members of the board, as a homeowner and full-time resident of Rhine Cliff and as a neighbor down the street, I would like to express my support for the proposed design for the Blackwood residence. After reviewing the proposed designs, I find that is a very well-thought-out approach, which sensitively combines the new and the old, and further enhances the older, original dwelling by demolishing the addition, which I feel was an eyesore. In the words of a former resident, David Anton, a specialist in historic preservation with the GSA, "The proposed design meets the intent of the Department of Interior's secretary standards for the integration of new structures within a historic district by proposing a design of its time rather than by recreating a false sense of history. New buildings within historic districts can add interest and enhance existing character of the district. Key to successful integration of new and old is quality, design, and construction. I'm sure that these two key components will be incorporated into this project, as I have worked with Steve Mensch and seen and experienced the highest quality of design and construction. Respectfully, Susan C."
Thank you, Susan. Thanks. Other comments? Yes. Joseph, if you could all come up to the...
You've got Michael Shepherd over there, too.
Okay. I can't see past this thing.
Hello, my name is Joseph Maresker. I live in Rhinebeck, and I've...
Rhine Cliff.
Louder.
Rhine Cliff.
Rhine Cliff, of course. Sue basically has said how I feel about a sensitive treatment of somewhat historic building, and yet, to give us something of our time. I live in one of the newer ugly houses in Rhinebeck, and I walk around that street almost every day. I do it just for health. And the area between the garage and Carolyn's proposed building is so minimal. When you have the graciousness that she's afforded us with the view to the north, and has let people go there whenever they want, literally, to enjoy it, the minimal view... I'm an artist, and believe me, I'm really concerned about what I see and what we've preserved. But the view that sits between the two buildings is a sliver, and it need not even be there. You don't really look at that. You look at the one to the north. So, I have no problems with this, and I like the idea that... I don't want to live in a museum. And Rhine Cliff used to be a slum when I moved here. I think they've cleaned it up pretty nicely, looks pretty good, and I think it could continue to be beautiful. But it doesn't have to be an ersatz creation that's based on some people's taste. I think we live in the 21st century, and I would have ripped down the whole thing and started something new myself, so I'm shocked that these people are trying to respect other people's tastes. But in the end, this is 2014, and that's all I really have to say.
Thank you. Yes, Andrew.
Hi, my name is Andrew Shepherd, and I live in Rhine Cliff, and I served on the Rhine Cliff zoning subcommittee of the Comprehensive Plan Committee. And we spent a great deal of time talking about the hamlet and the appearance and everything. I have no problems with modern... The view from Steve's living room is quite lovely. The problem I have is the overall volume and how you're getting to that number, because we sat around and looked at maps of Rhine Cliff a lot, and Rhine Cliff is little slivers of lots all over the place combined. So, if you're taking three substandard lots and saying that I get the total buildability of three full-size lots, I think that's... What we were trying to avoid was having much larger houses on the small parcels in Rhine Cliff. And I admire the fact that it's trying, the effort to hide it at all, but as a precedent, I think, as I look around my own neighborhood, I see that as very problematic for the hamlet, when you people start combining lots to make bigger houses. So, that's what I want you to keep in mind.
Thank you. Yes. Richard? I'm sorry, you couldn't see me past the model, could you?
I've seen it. Richard Kopischansky, I've lived in Rhine Cliff since 1980. Rhine Cliff is an eclectic little town. It, you know, for 250 years or whatever it's been, we have not had these regulations, and somehow, it has evolved into something that we all want to save as is, period. And I don't necessarily agree with that. I think it is, you know, I'm... I love it so much. I mean, I'm here forever, and hopefully, that's a long time. But it's, there's different buildings. There's different, there's different fields. There's clavoured houses, there's brick houses, there's some more modern, there's some older. I think it's a really great eclectic mix. I can't speak to the views. I mean, if neighbors are going to be blocked, that's something else. I'm not going to speak to that, and that is, you know, Robert Haywood brought up very good points, and so you can't really, you have to be careful with that, and I'm sure Steve and Carolyn Blackwood would probably, you know, work on that. But, and I think the actual consolidation of those three lots would be tremendous, because that would do what you're talking about, John, as far as preserving that park-like view. It's a tremendous view. I do think that the space between the garage and the old house is minimal, as Joseph was saying. But again, I can't speak to Robert's problem with the view of the Haywoods. I mean, I've been back there, it is a beautiful view, and I guess that would have to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
Carolyn.
Carolyn.
I'm the evil Carolyn Blackwood. I just wanted to say that, first of all, the first people that came over after I got this house was Mr. Haywood, and he gave me a beautiful picture of the way the house was, and he gave me a little door thing that said about, something about living on the water, and we both commiserated about how lucky we were, and I still feel incredibly lucky to be there. I love the river. I love the view. And I would do nothing in any way to try to take away Mr. Haywood's view. I've been assured, and if it weren't the case, I would want it to be changed, that the new pavilion will not interfere with his view. I don't want it to interfere with his view. There is a piece of garage. His garage faces the street on the side, and my garage will obstruct one window facing the street. Nothing else in the front view of that garage is being obstructed, as far as I know. That's what I've been told. I'm trying to be extremely respectful of the spot. I love it. I go up and down with the Riverkeeper and take pictures. I've been on the board of Sina Hudson. I am a major cheerleader for this river, and I do, I think I'm in a, some sort of German guide to the river or something, because I have German tourists. I look out the window and they're picnicking, and they're always German. So, I think it's like some tour guide, German book or something. And so, I go out there and I find out, and they're picnicking, and I give them their mustard, and like, I give them a book on the river. I just wanted you to know that, and John, that open view is something that I really would never take away. I mean, I feel like I'm sort of a custodian of that view for the neighborhood. And yeah, people do drive by, they drive by all the time. I had a woman who would drive by twice a day to look at the view, and one night, you know, one day I came out and I said, "That's some view, huh?" And she said, "Yes." I was a little girl, my best friend lived in the lighthouse, and I used to go have sleepover dates at the lighthouse. So, I said, "Listen, anytime you want to come and sit on my chairs, you can." But I'm just saying that I'm not an evil person. I don't want to hurt anything. Yes, I want to do something that's different, but I don't want to do it at the cost of anyone else. And I want it to be a win-win situation. I want to be able to have the house that I want. I want to get rid of that horrible, ugly house that's there now. This piece of property deserves something splendid. And I don't want to hurt my neighbors at all. So, I just wanted to make that clear. Okay?
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, somebody else.
Hello, my name is Margaret Baker. I'm, I live in Rhinebeck, and I'm a friend of Carolyn. I've known Carolyn Marks Blackwood for 10 years. I've walked the hills of Rhine Cliff with her before she bought her property on Grinnell Street. I have listened to her daily express her love of Rhine Cliff and her passion for the river. She's a staunch supporter of Riverkeeper and Sina Hudson, as she mentioned. She appreciates and promotes the beauty of Rhine Cliff and the river, which is the subject of much of her photography. She has a heightened sense of aesthetics and is a very sensitive and caring individual. I can tell you all that there's no way she would consider doing anything that would adversely impact the environment that she so appreciates, herself, or the impact it has on her neighbors, as she has just stated. I think with her architect, they have striven to improve the property in a tasteful, in an unobstructive, and in a very respectful manner, and I think that should be embraced by the community, because I think it could be a lot worse if all three parcels were being used by somebody that didn't have that heightened aesthetic and that appreciation of the view and of the hamlet of Rhine Cliff. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening? If you're sitting behind this thing, I don't see you, so...
No.
No one else? Okay. We're going to be doing, because, first of all, I would think it'd be helpful, the planning board members, to go out there and take a look while those polls are up, to take a look. I know the Phase 1 architecture, archaeology is something we've been discussing. There's been some discussion about a consolidation of all three lots. That's not currently before the planning board, and as I said, that's not something we can require as a condition of approval, should we get to that point. That would be something for the applicant and her people working with her to discuss and decide if that's indeed what they really wish to do. We could, we'll reschedule this? We do it on the 22nd?
Suggestion to the board, potentially, not potentially, the suggestion is, schedule this for planning board-only discussion at your special meeting on the 22nd, in that there have been a lot of points raised that I think the board needs to, needs to discuss, and then schedule the continuation of the public hearing for the May 5th meeting.
Could I suggest that we also ask the applicant and her people working with her to come to that meeting, because there may be some things we wish to discuss, such as consolidation of three lots, things like that, to see exactly where we're going?
At the meeting on which...
On the 22nd.
On the 22nd.
22nd.
Right.
It's a Tuesday and not a Monday.
Because everyone said Sunday was Easter, and they didn't want to, too many Easter eggs, they didn't want to come to a meeting on Monday.
And then you want me to come on my birthday?
We might have cake.
We'll make it appropriate. We'll all sing to him as a happy birthday.
Benny's really not... But is that, is that agreeable, is that agreeable to you, that we would have that meeting on the 22nd with the planning board and you, to go over...
Work session.
Where we are, work session, basically.
I don't have my calendar with me, but I can public...
Okay. Would that be satisfactory?
I'm sorry, I'm just looking.
Okay.
April 22nd, which is a Tuesday.
That would facilitate May 5th.
Right, and then we would reconvene the public hearing on May 5th, I think that we'd pretty well...
It's fine.
Okay.
And it's...
Well, there you go. We'll have a birthday cake on the 22nd and a birthday cake on the 5th. What I'm hoping is that at that point, we'll have been able to develop a response to the concerns people have. I think everyone sees, recognizes their legitimate concerns, and at the same time, that there's no desire here by the applicant to do anything that would be hurtful to the community as a whole. And hopefully, maybe we can, you know, come up with something brilliant at that, on the 22nd. We'll reconvene the public hearing on the 5th. So, I guess what I'd like is a resolution from the planning board to hold a work session with Ms. Blackwood and her representatives on the 22nd.
At about 7:00.
At about 7:00. Let's, oh, God willing.
No, no.
Okay. And we will continue the public hearing on this on May 5th at...
6:45, Joan?
At 6:45.
Do you want to resend two additional members of the planning board down to review the site?
I'd like to have everyone go by, because the post is up now to really, so everyone can really see.
So, is there one, is there one post up or two posts?
There's one post, and then I think that the...
Stakes. The other three are staked.
Are staked.
And you're going to stake, you're going to stake the garage also?
I'll add a poll for the garage.
Okay, okay.
Give me a little time.
Do we need to call, or can we walk down a little closer off the road to...
Well, I think that you really should see votes from your own tribe and from the Haywood's companies, and you have to ask the Haywoods if that's okay.
Yeah.
I think that's a very...
And we have the...
Mr. Haywood's contact info, so we could...
We do have that information.
We also have an invitation.
We do, okay.
I thought submitted that, that you're welcome to the property, any...
Yeah.
Is there someone in the apartment, garage department?
There is.
Yes, there is.
I mean, I personally would be interested in standing, there's a deck on the front of it?
Is there a porch, and is it a picture window with a magnificent view north as well?
He's asking in writing, so he's given his permission.
Yeah, no, I would just like to just be able to stand there and see.
What I have here is, I have a letter from Mr. Haywood. I'll read just so that it's official. Good morning, Joan. Would you forward this email to Michael Trimble for me? Thanks. Dear Michael, regarding the Carolyn Blackwell Building Project on Grinnell Street, Rhine Cliff, I saw the mock-up poll estimating the height of the south building earlier today. I was stunned by how much of my parents' northern view would be blocked by this one building, and know the actual buildings would block much more. I realize this is only one aspect of many other concerns. I would like to make a formal request to both zoning and planning board members to visit my parents' property at 6866 Grinnell to view this mock-up before any decision is made. And we have the phone numbers here as well. So, you know, talk to Joanie, and we can, and we can definitely do that. Okay?
So, Carol, that's all right with you, that you wanted to look at my...
And... I'm going to bring a picnic.
No, Joan. Thanks.
Okay.
I was going to say, can we sit in the chair like the woman?
Yeah. First of all, I want to thank...
Speak German, can we have mustard delivered?
I think I can help with that. I think, first of all, I want to thank Ms. Blackwell and her willingness to really work with us. I want to thank the people in Rhine Cliff, because you've always shown a great concern for your community, and a great concern for one another. The one thing I've sensed here is a total lack of hostility over this, concerns, but a total lack of hostility, which I think is great. And I sincerely hope that it will come to a resolution that really will answer everyone's concerns, and moving forward, which I think tends to be what we try to aim to do, and I think we're usually successful. And I thank you all for your willingness to work through this project, and look forward to seeing you all on May 5th for the, continues the public hearing, and you guys on April 22nd. We'll see what we can't iron out. We'll see what we can't iron out.
Probably should take a two-minute break to let?
Two-minute break so the room can empty.
Yes. And the Mench, the Grassmere hearings, the next item.
Right.
Moving right along to the next meeting.
Your father, your father softened us up, Jonathan. He's a cake. Grassmere LLC, New York State Route 9 and Mill Road Special Use Permit. Public hearing on application for special use permit for Country &amp; Two under Town Code Chapter 125 zoning in the matter of the proposed Grassmere Farm Hotel Development and a parcel of 250 acres as depicted on drawing SK 2.0, consisting of 25.2 acre parcel, 29.5 acre parcel, and the balance of a minimum of 195.3 acres in the Rural Agricultural RA-10 zoning district, the Hudson River National Historic Landmarks District, the Estates District Scenic Area of statewide significance, and the town of Rhinebeck Local Waterfront Revitalization Area, being a Type 1 Action Under Seeker for which coordinated environmental quarter view has been conducted and a finding statement issued by the planning board in its role as lead agency on March 3rd, 2014. So, you want a special permit, I take it.
Yeah.
Do I hear a motion? Would you like to elaborate on that? I mean, this was for the public. Basically, what we've been, what we've been doing previously, I guess I'll elaborate on it, was a generic environmental impact statement for the Grassmere Farm project. That seeker process has been completed and we have been able to issue our seeker finding and finding statement. So the seeker process is complete. What's being applied for at this point is the special use permit to allow the Country &amp; Two and the different uses that go along with that that Jonathan has been discussing that was discussed under the seeker, the seeker review process that we just went through. Another process, the site plan review will be conducted once we have the application. And that's really when all the nitty-gritty gets discussed. How everything's going to be built, where it's going to go, how it's going to go, all of the different things that were discussed in seeker, all the things that can be done, the mitigation measures, all those things. How are you going to do that? How are you going to make that happen? That's what will be coming in the site plan review. So, tonight, basically, this is the public hearing on the special use permit for the Country &amp; Two. And I think that, anyone have anything they want to say?
I'll have a comment. I'll just, I'll just add to what the, what the chair stated. The proposed special use permit that the board would consider after the public hearing, as well as the related statement of consistency under the local waterfront revitalization plan are essentially, are totally based, not essentially based, they are totally based on the final generic environmental impact statement and the statement, the 103-page statement of findings that was issued by the board a couple of months ago. So the, there are no new conditions, no new requirements, no new permit or approval requirements set forth in the specially, proposed special use permit that are not, that have not been previously discussed, embedded completely through those, through the seeker documents. And if the board gets to that point this evening, you'll see in the, the resolution approving the special use permit, essentially, there is, with a little bit of amplification, essentially, the recapture or the reciting of various sections of the finding statement listing the 23 other permits that are required and things of that sort before the project would actually move to, to implementation.
Okay. There are just a couple of procedural things to do. I guess, Joni, we've confirmed circulation and anything from the county on the special use permit? Okay. I know we circulated earlier, so I don't know that we would get anything further from them on that.
Yeah, actually, the county responded previously on the, on the environmental impact statement and expressed its support for the project. Lack of, lack of concerns, as long as it met the requirements of the zoning law, which it, you know, clearly, clearly does.
So we've received nothing further?
Right.
Any report from the Conservation Advisory Board on the special use permit? Okay. Because I know that you did comment on the GEIS and through that process.
And it's important to, to point out that during the seeker process, the Conservation Advisory Board in its other hat, as Waterfront Advisory Committee, essentially conducted its review with respect to coastal policies.
Consistency. I don't believe, let me see, I'm trying to see what we might have in terms of written comments.
Joan, any written comments? There are none that I'm aware of.
Any new ones since, okay. All right, then, yes.
I do?
Okay. Is that, do you have it?
The letter?
The easement?
I'm sorry?
The 1940s.
Oh, okay, the, the letter.
Short post.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
Okay, let me, I will read this into the record. Please submit this letter for consideration by the planning board at the upcoming public hearing on the Grassmere project. I intend to be there in person but have had to leave the country on an urgent family matter. Dear Rhinebeck Planning Board, we are writing as residents of the 1750s, 50s Steenberg Tavern and Guest Cottage located at 61196125 Route 9. Our driveway is an easement granted in the 1940s over one of the three Grassmere access points onto Route 9 that are referenced in the plan. We would like to, we would like clarification of the intended use of this exit, which is not entirely clear from the documents. Our primary concern is that we can continue in the quiet enjoyment of our tranquil and historically important property, a house that is the oldest and nearest neighbor of Grassmere. We are seeking clarification that there will not be a substantial increase in traffic extremely close to our property, as well illustrated by photos 60 and 61 tonight. I don't have those photos here, so I'm not entirely sure what they are. The planned narrative states that restaurant and special event parking traffic will use the southernmost exit entrance of the three on Route 9, the one near where Route 9 transitions from a four-lane highway to a two-lane. Our shared driveway is the middle of the three Route 9 access points, with the third being the northernmost one where hotel guests will exit as per the recent revisions. The perspective states that our driveway, the road past the Steenberg Tavern, will be primarily used as a service entrance. We would like to, a more specific description of what this would entail. At present, traffic consists of very occasional farm vehicles and service providers. In addition, it's hard to understand what the word primarily means. Additionally, there's some inconsistency when comparing the original narrative with the extended traffic studies, new photographs, and labels. The plan could benefit from clear and consistent labeling of the entrance exits under discussion. Only exit entrance numbers 1, 2, and 3 are used, although there are a total of four access points in the plan, the three on Route 9 along with the one on Mill Road that has already received extensive scrutiny. The switching of numbers 1 and 3 in this iteration also adds a level of confusion to the reader. Photos 63 and 64 views of our driveway are labeled as proposed entrance 3, which seems to give it a prominence in the project that's not suggested by the narrative, whereas photos 65, 66, 67, 68, which are of the access point that the narrative says is for restaurant and special event traffic, are not labeled with an exit number but are just given the designation, the southernmost proposed entrance along Route 9. It should be noted that our driveway is actually a very dangerous access point to Route 9. It falls away steadily, leading to extremely poor visibility when exiting. And on Route 9, where the speed limit is higher than it should be ideally, still 55, not yet 40, traffic barrels along. There is a severe dip near a curve in Route 9 just south of our exit that obstructs the line of vision of traffic that has just come off the four lane, the four-way stretch. We never turn left out of the drive. If we want to go into Rhinebeck, we turn right and then turn around. The road is definitely not suited for more traffic than it gets now. But also, as you can see from photos 60 and 61, anyone passing along the access road that doubles as our driveway looks right into the yard where we spend a lot of time and right into our front porch and the patio of our guest cottage. And our house is in fact even closer to the access road than the photographs make it appear. We're already very close to busy Route 9 on our east and we have a privacy fence up on that side. If the southernmost Route 9 access road indeed becomes a major entry or exit, restaurant and special event traffic will proceed along Grassmere property very close to the western edge of our lot, photos 72 and 74. That by itself will be a substantial change from the degree of quiet and privacy we're able to enjoy now and we're looking forward to as retirement approaches. If on top of that, there is additional traffic on our south, on the road we use as a driveway and on the very doorstep of what is just a 3/4 acre property, it would be extraordinarily uncomfortable for us. We would basically be a traffic island on three sides. We're very supportive of Jonathan Mench's Grassmere project, but we would like assurance that the small road won't see more use than it does now when there appears to be other more suitable options. Respectfully, Rachel and Stephen Coates.
That driveway is not invented.
It's not. It's not, it's not one of the proposed entrances on?
Right.
I mean, she had, I had that with her several months ago, that situation. We may say how, how it should have been viewed fine, but I think she just is.
So it's possibly through the renumbering of the exits when that was changed so that one was not Mill Road anymore, when then some of the numbering was flipped?
Yeah.
Just led to confusion.
I understand why she would be worried about it, but our intention is not to use that.
Okay.
It's not one of the proposed entrances.
Okay, very good.
And I actually, she forwarded me that same email.
Mm-hmm.
And I responded to her to tell her that was the case.
Okay, excellent.
And I haven't received a response.
Okay. Well, she's out of the country.
Yeah. But it's not.
Okay. Any other comment from the public? Yes.
My name is Kate Deschard. I'm at 6036 Route 9 in Rhinebeck. So I'm at the southern point of the project. I came in the other day and talked to you, Michael, about, I'm trying to get clarification of where the entrances or exits would be for the project. And I'm not clear, and now I'm even less clear. My concern is the last exit, the one that would be closest to my driveway, which is where the two lanes becomes four lanes and it's northern on Wheeler Road. Are you still planning on using that?
We are planning on using an entrance in that area. There's an older state entrance that exists down at that part of the property. You actually look at it, you can see the gates. Do you know what I'm talking about?
Yes.
Yeah, so the idea is to reestablish that as an entrance for the restaurant and stone blocks.
So do you have a traffic, I'm worried about the kind of traffic that will be going there. Is it truck traffic, what time of day? It's a, it's a rough convergence there on 9 because of speeding traffic from the four lanes. It gets slower at the two lanes and there are quite a few accidents there over the years that I've lived there. So I, I just, I would like some information about that.
We're going to have to coordinate with DOT during the site plan approval process to establish exactly how this is going to work. We are fortunate that we do have some flexibility on our side, there's some additional land. I don't know what DOT is going to, is going to, is going to ask for, but it seems to us, I'm speaking for myself, if you're engineering, that there's some possibilities with some tranglings, which should help mitigate some of those issues. But that's not what we're going to be working through. It's part of the site plan approval process and once we get to it, we'll all, we'll imagine this conversation.
Is that something that becomes part of the public conversation?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. The traffic studies were done as part of the GEIS, the Generic Environmental Impact Statement, which certainly discussed volume and use, I think hours and things of that sort. But DOT will not involve itself in design and suggestions of how it ought to be configured and things like that until we're actually further along in terms of actually beginning to implement the project. So that information on sort of use, volume, and things of that sort does exist, but the actual physical determination of how it's going to look, how it's going to function has yet to be designed because it has to be done with New York State DOT and they won't get involved until you're further into the project.
And also have an, you know, an opportunity to comment on that?
Yes, that's, that's when I was discussing the site plan review. When you get down to the nitty-gritty, how this is all going to be done, how it's all going to be put together will be subject to public review as well.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
For the, for the record, just for everyone's understanding, I think it's important to point out that the planning board, as secret lead agency, attempted to coordinate with DOT during the seeker review process. DOT's position, however, was that they, while they generally reviewed the traffic study with respect to volume and things of that sort, that they chose not to comment on any matters concerning configuration of the access points until the highway work permit process, DOT's highway work permit process, which would, as Michael suggested, be coordinated with the site plan review process here at the, at the town level. So when the planning board here gets to site plan review, conducts a public hearing on the site plan, you'll have the opportunity to comment. And at that point in, in time, the DOT input regarding configuration will also be in hand.
Other comment from the public? Yes.
Hi, my name is Kathy Accino. I live at 6042 Route 9, right next door to Kate, just north of hers, of her property. And I want to express my concern about traffic, northbound traffic in particular turning into that southernmost potential restaurant entrance there. As everybody knows, the speed limit along there is 55. And on a good day, most people do 55 along that road. The, the prospect of a left-hand turn from what I refer to as the passing lane onto the, to the Grassmere prop, onto, onto the restaurant is really scary because it's right at the northern end where everybody's sort of jockeying for position to get that last 10 feet so they don't have to, you know, wait behind everybody. Believe me, I've lived there for 28 years. I know what it's, what it's like. And my, one, one other concern is probably down the road if, when this all gets to fruition. Obviously, if that proposed restaurant entrance will be, will be so, that there's going to have to be a sign someplace that says what it is and left-hand turn. And I really don't, would not like to have that sign anywhere on or near my property. But I realize that's not money, you know, something I have a lot of control over. And as far as the traffic goes, I realize it's up to DOT to do their study. I don't have a problem with that, but I would just sort of like to voice my concerns over this.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Robert Donaldson, I'm a resident on Mill Road and I'm speaking as a resident and not as a member of the CAB. Regarding my involvement with the CAB, I recused myself from any involvement with the Grassmere project from the beginning and continue to do so. From our last meeting, when I spoke on November 18th, there was a meeting with Jonathan and members of the CAB, to which I was invited. And I'd like to thank Jonathan for his willingness to work with me to address some of the concerns that I raised at the November 18th meeting. And I just wanted to bring up one or two things tonight, just to reinforce some of those assurances that we discussed that night. Just a couple of questions, all right? The original proposal for the entrance and egress from Mill Road, all right, that has been changed to a new entrance, is that correct, Jonathan? Are we going with that new proposal?
The Mill Road.
Okay. And it would only be an entrance, only, no egress from that site, except for emergency vehicles, something like that? Sure, I'd be understand. My only concern is, we talked about, just to add some reassurance, is that what if any safeguards or plans that you have to ensure that hotel guests will only use that and prevent someone from myself would like to go onto your property from cutting in there, but like what assurances will you offer? Is that in your new proposal?
It's, it's, the new proposal clearly identifies as being an entrance only. We haven't gotten to the point of trying to figure out how the security is going to work.
Okay.
But it's clearly identified as an entrance only. And that's the intention.
Good, thank you. And then, and it's our understanding that Mill Road, all right, would be the only entrance used on Mill Road for hotel guests, visitors, maintenance staff, that no other existing entrance from Mill Road or any future developed entrance from Mill Road would be used?
We've got, we've got it clearly identified on the site plan as being the Mill Road entrance for the hotel guests and for entrance only. And that's what we, and that's what we submit.
There is no other entrance from Mill Road on the application before us, so that's the only one they can use, given the application that we have.
Okay. I think that's it. That's my concerns. Thanks, Jonathan. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Not seeing anyone else? I think I'm going to turn it over to Art for a minute because you had something suggested about how much of this I have to read.
Well, let's start off with, Michael, you, in this instance, you can close the public hearing in that the seeker has already been completed on this project, so technically this application is complete. So the first thing for the board to do would be, if it's your desire, would be to move to close the public hearing. Once you do that, then you do have, for consideration, perhaps later this evening, the draft special, the resolution approving the special use permit, as well as the accompanying statement of consistency under, say, under the LWRP. But the action right now, before you move on to the next public hearing, is to close this public hearing.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Very good, okay. We'll have a very long resolution for you later. Okay. Our final public hearing this evening, I think.
Yes.
Okay. Robert Duffy, 195 River Road and 31 Carmel Drive, special use permit and site plan. Combined public hearing on applications for special use permits and site plan review and approval under Town Code Chapter 125 zoning and the matter of proposed single-family residential development of combined 44.096 acre, oh, that's cool, 06 acre parcels with site landscaping improvements, guest accommodations in the form of three detached accessory dwellings and other accessory structures in the historic preservation HB20 zoning district, the Hudson River Historic Landmarks District, the Estates District scenic area of statewide significance, and the town of Reinbeck local waterfront revitalization area being a type 1 action under seeker and a matter subject to a three-part application pending before the ZBA. And I do have a question here. The application that we had before us was strictly for the teahouse property because there has been no consolidation between the property for the convent and the teahouse, although I know that has been discussed.
I can start by answering that. The applications all note both properties, just as a sort of, I think, suggestion from you guys in terms of how to deal with that. The property, the property, the work on 31 Carmel Drive was much more restricted, although it does sort of fit into the overall site plan review.
Well, the work on Carmel Drive basically was a demolition permit to remove the convent and all the other structures and all the other hard surfaces there, and then grass it over. And that was the only thing that was going to happen on the Carmel Drive property.
There's also two, two security gates proposed.
Okay. The problem I'm having is the application, as it was brought before us to look at, did not include both properties because they've not been consolidated. If you were going to do security gates, let's say, on Carmel Drive, that would be a different application. And I do know the discussion has been going on about whether or not you wish to consolidate the properties or not.
Hi, my name's Jennifer Van Tyle. There is no application to consolidate the lots right now.
Correct.
We saw that in the notice of hearing, both parcels were mentioned because they relate to each other.
They do relate.
If we need to file an amended application that mentions the Carmel Drive property, we'd be happy to.
I think possibly, or a separate one, that that's where the security gates will be since it's not a single property. It's basically two separate properties, so two separate projects whatever might occur. If indeed consolidation is desired, then that would somewhat change what we're discussing here because all of a sudden, the property that we're then referring to is different through the consolidation process. The one thing I would suggest is that with the two separate properties on Carmel Drive, you can have a primary principal structure, and you can also have 1,500 square feet of accessory structures. If you combine the two, you don't get more accessory structures or anything. You basically lose that 1,500 square feet.
Right.
So it creates, in terms of what's being asked for the ZBA, you're in essence almost creating a hardship through a consolidation. I just thought I would mention that.
Right. There is no present application for consolidation. But I think one of the things that Christopher is going to say this evening is there have been a number of comments at the site visit. I'm sure there'll be more comments tonight.
Oh, yeah.
And we intend to respond to all those comments in writing, in a formal submission because certainly there are a number of questions. We're at the beginning of the review process, and we'll assure that all of the questions are answered. But I think you're correct. We should articulate clearly what our intentions are with respect to both parcels. But I believe they were mentioned in passing in the notice of hearing, but we did not file an application for consolidation. There's none filed at this time, but we'll address that in the next session.
Okay. Just so we don't get confused about what we have here, because if someone assumes that both properties have been consolidated and they haven't been, that would tend to be misleading.
Right. I think that's a good point to clarify.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Your on.
Didn't say there was a submission application.
Hello, my name is Christopher Courtney. I'm with the firm Jack Litch Gardner Architects. We are working with Robert Duffy, who our office has been working with for 13 years, both professionally and for personal projects on his. He purchased the, we're in the northwest corner of Reinbeck on the Hudson River. River Road is, he purchased, sorry, these are existing and this is new, so I'll kind of walk through these. So this is a connection point here. This is 195 River Road. This is 31 Carmel Drive. They are two separate properties, as we've just discussed. The, as I said, the property was purchased about a year ago. Robert's intent is to, to bring the, it is also on an old Astor estate, a portion of what's, you know, sort of left that's been split up over the years. His intent is to bring the site back to its glory as much as possible with respect to the history of the place as much as possible. He moved to the property because of the beauty of the bones that are there. There has been a little bit of neglect in the few years between his purchase and the previous owner's tenancy. I'm going to just go quickly through the different, the program that's being proposed for the site. On 195 River Road, there's an exist, I'm just going to go through what's existing and then what's proposed. There's an existing house that's two parts, one that was a teahouse that was built in 1948, and then since then, in 2008, an addition that was added. There is, there are two shed outbuildings that we believe to be built in the last 30 years based on aerial photographs and the construction of them. There's also a barn that was built in the last fall. That's it for existing. There was a convent that was, that actually removed last week. That's not part of this proposal. For the new work, he's interested in, starting with the house, extending a courtyard and pool. He's interested in converting the existing structure, which was built as a barn, into an accessory dwelling unit. He's interested in removing both of, both of these sheds and replacing them both with outbuildings. The dash line here is where this is being removed. A storage barn is being proposed for this spot, and this shed here is basically being replaced in the same location with an accessory dwelling unit as well. There are two, total of three, security gates, one that's being proposed on 195 River Road, and then two on, on outside. And then there's also a sort of program for landscaping. So that's sort of bigger picture, what the proposal is. And then getting into, in order to be able to sort of study the site and understand how to make proposals for architecture and landscape, which are very much married on this property and very much sort of the same, one in the same in sort of this historical sense in the way that the site was sort of thought of, you kind of have to look back at the history of the site and how it was developed and things like that. So let's keep this one up and take this one down. So we're looking way back to sort of the beginnings of the Astors moving into Reinbeck, which is a rich history, some of which people here probably have a better sense of than I do at the moment. But we look back to the landscape design that was sort of worked on by Ayler's, a historic landscape designer. There's a couple of properties here, which I'm sorry, I have to look at my notes for. This is Rockabye, which is just a few parcels to the north in Red Hook, and this is Dean Velaci, both laid out by Ayler's. These are, I'll get into those in a second. These are sort of older, I think, 1876, 1876 map that sort of gives a brief sort of understanding of the site, specifically Fern Cliff, and then from 1942 map of sort of the larger portion of the combined estate as it had grown. Right. And then over here, we've basically got just a couple of older postcards that sort of show the landscape and the openness of the space. This is a picture of the original mansion with certain front huts, and then a couple of more recent photos that again show the sort of idyllic romantic way of estate with, you know, the road laser curving off and being open. So when we look at the, we're looking into some of these sort of points that are, that are made about the sort of techniques that were used here, which we understand would have been used, and this is this portion of Fern Cliff or the full of Fern Cliff as well. To look at buildings set sort of within rooms, that, you know, the building to the south was, was, you know, done after Ayler's had, had, the first of the two Aylers had moved on, but this building was also kind of set in a, in a sort of open space naturally. They, they used landscaping trees, both deciduous and conifer-type trees, to sort of add to the idea of these rooms and spaces and as decoration along carriage roads as well to sort of create these, you know, scenic romantic views and idyllic spaces. So when we look at, I'm going to kind of zoom in on each of these little sort of programs that we're looking in, and then this kind of comes back as a sort of idea and a consideration of how we're looking at each of these spaces in sort of respect to what's there, what This is a sort of recent history of work that was done, which is not part of this application, but just gives a sense of what the, what our client is interested in doing with the site in general. He bought, as I mentioned, he bought the, this property last year. He did some renovations on the interior. These are photos, the photos on the top are of, you know, the original teahouse, both sort of later versions, not probably how they were built in terms of like the gardening and the landscape and the full lushness that would have been here in these gardens here. In 2008, the previous owners of the property built this, this is a photo of the same exact view. They built this sort of extension to the house and sort of encompassed a little bit of, sort of encompassed the, the original teahouse. These are both views of the front. Obviously, this is the view of the front. This is a view of the back after the addition, so you get the sense of what is sort of left out of the original teahouse. And then as part of the, part of the house renovation done in, over the summer and the fall, Robert also wanted to fix the looks, the look of this as much as possible. In doing so, he looked back to what was originally there. By no means does this fix anything, but it, it doesn't, it sort of is his, his, his way of sort of giving back to the history of the house and the estate. So we can go on to the next one. In the same sense of sort of doing this work, he's also, as I, as we've talked about, the convent has been demolished as a way to sort of, it's a non-contributing building in most manners, and he's interested in just leaving the property open as a sort of clean landscape as it was originally. So what we're looking at here is, so now I'm going to zoom in to sort of the area around the house that he's looking to do work. Specifically, here, here's the, here's what was the teahouse, the portion of it. Here is the extended, possibly 2008, as long as well as a driveway that cuts into the ground and the low-grade garages are all existing. The proposed here is to, quick programmatic, is to have a courtyard, a pool, and a pavilion. So again, again, looking back, oh, again, looking back at sort of the historical examples, which we think are important to kind of bring in to this new development or re, sort of a relook at the site and how it can be developed. We did find some drawings of gardens that wore, this map shows basically the original Fern Cliff mansion. This is a set of gardens where the teahouse currently is. This is a larger, sort of, a larger plan of those gardens, which are these gardens, which I think a lot of people may have seen in postcards and photographs as well. And looking at these photographs and the landscaping and the way things were treated, where, you know, this is, this is very much, at least this portion of the project, is very much a landscape sort of project in a lot of ways. So, so, and what we're seeing here is sort of this sense of a garden in a room, and then this room is sort of a room within a larger open landscape that's sort of even further surrounded by trees and, so there's sort of these rooms within rooms within rooms. The garden is also obviously very much an accessory to, to the house or to the mansion at the time. And, and then even some of the, the landscaping pieces that are used, you know, there's a, there's a reflection pool at the beginning. There's a sort of stepped terraced sort of plan, sort of experience through the garden. A lot of the edging is in boxwoods and hedges. There's a large hedge that surrounds, you know, the gardens in the back. This would be this back corner here. So, so we're looking at a lot of these elements and trying to work, work with those. In looking over here then, basically, the, the elements of the courtyard are sort of low, three-foot-high brick wall and sort of interrupted by gates and piers. The drive, the main driveway that currently exists comes into sort of a round asphalt area, so the idea is to kind of turn that up and sort of give it sort of, you know, early 20th century, they have some sort of European sort of feel and apparently that entrance to, to the house. So the driveway comes into these gates, and you go into this courtyard that has a armpit, basically armpit finish, escape base with hobbled bricks sort of created in, as well. There's landscaping within. There's basically hedges around and sort of in the front as well, and then it's sort of interspersed with hollow trees as a sort of decorative. There's an existing wall along the driveway, so all of this wall is sort of built, exists. It's just that the, it's having a nice, you know, kind of confined, low cover that's in the, well-loved or like it needs to be there. So we're replacing all of that and adding a few hydrangea trees here. There are, there's a sort of stepped pathway up to the pool, which we're very much seeing as a sort of, not replication by any means, but sort of echo of some of the elements that we saw on the site. It's through a sort of canopy area, which is kind of the sort of sense of this picture here. And then you're walking up into this room that's, there's a metal fence that surrounds, which is basically by code, to be around the pool. On both sides of that fence are a hedge. The outer hedge is misty lilacs. The inner hedge is the lower sort of American boxwood. The court is actually a grass court, again, sort of bringing back to some mountains here. The edging of the pool is a blue, blue zone coating, as are the stairs actually as well, which we find in, you know, all around the areas, sort of the, the wall, this old wall at the entrance of the property. The interior of the pool is just a white button. And then you move all the way over to a pavilion, which is basically seen as a, it is an accessory dwelling unit. It's meant to be an accessory to the pool, a sort of pool house. There are two floors. The main floor is just a bathroom, sort of little connect, and there's room for a, you know, a desk and some business room. There's a basement as well, so all of maybe a flood is underground. Its use is just for mechanical, for, for both the pool and for, should be an ice melt under, maybe courtyard or driveway. It should be an ice melt under maybe courtyard or driveway. Some other references we're using for some of the pool area, so this is a pool at the Barksden Oaks in Washington, DC, in a similar fashion. The roof of the mansion is sort of the way the stairs were used and the sort of coping , making it sort of simplistic, glass, grass lawn as well. Same sense of a feeling of being inside of a room. There's a sense of privacy, but also a sense of a little bit of oasis within a sort of much bigger property. And then also, we're just looking at a sort of emphasis for the... It's also an apartment, which also obviously has the much bigger teahouse structure as well. All right. There's a few sections showing all of these portions of the building. So, we're looking at the main house here. There's a rear terrace now, and then the hillside actually comes down much more steeper than we're showing here. The hillside basically drops right off at the back of that brick wall. This is all existing. This is the proposed courtyard in the front. This would be the, you know, gate to the driveway. This is a small old brick wall that sort of encases the stairs on either side with trees on both sides, so that you walk right up to the sort of heads in the pool area. This elevation, sorry, is looking along here. This is basically a section through, so you're getting a section through the front of the house. You're cutting through the courtyard, you're cutting through the stairs, and you're cutting through the pool itself. And then this is basically the opposite elevation from here. So, you're looking down this way. You're looking at the main house, the courtyard, the stairs, and then the hedging, and you can see the little portion of the pavilion that you would see beyond the pool hedging. These elevations are looking along here. So, again, you're getting the pavilion, you're getting the hedge, courtyard, you're getting a few steps down, and this is that, this is the driveway there, and then sort of the course. This is a section, basically same, same perspective, but just cut through the pool itself, so you're cutting through the pavilion, through the pool, and down through the stairs as well. And then it's just a small elevation showing the height of the brick wall and courtyard. So, kind of just coming back to it, this is that whole area that we were just talking about with all of those pieces. The next piece I want to talk about, a program, is this barn that's over here. This barn was built last year and was meant to be a storage unit. After living on the site for a few months, he... Robert realized it wasn't actually enough for all of the equipment that's being used to maintain the property and actually both properties now. It was tucked away into the trees sort of as much as possible. There is a desire to screen this some more, and I want to come back to that when I talk more about the landscaping. The proposal entails a conversion of this storage unit into an accessory dwelling unit for guests to stay in. It has been suggested, and we've looked into making it feel a little more like it fits within sort of this very historic district. There's some references down here of local stone used in some places that are probably very familiar to some of you. This is just a general photo in the area. I forget where it is. This is obviously... This is the dairy barns that were built also on the Ferncliff site originally, and this is the Rockefeller Stone barns in Westchester. So, what we're looking at with these is sort of just this sort of, you know, Norman-style brick buildings, sort of utilitarian buildings. In some cases, these types of buildings are very much out in the open. In some cases, these buildings are very much tucked away. Also, that's sort of a... A sort of piece of the way that Ayler's sort of used to design outbuildings. There's a... There's a quote about Ayler's is planned being for... This is for St. Valesse, planned being innovative for its placement of outbuildings. It says, "A stable is located in proximity, therefore convenient, but hidden in an interior wooded area. Other elements such as cottage and gatehouse replace these features." In this case, we want this to be an outbuilding that is not really very much seen, that is sort of kind of hidden into the trees and the woods. What's helpful about this drawing is you can obviously see where a lot of the existing trees are. Again, I'll get more into landscaping of that. So, the proposal entails converting this into an accessory dwelling unit, refacing the house with a local field stone. This doesn't have as much color vari... This is a rendering, obviously. It doesn't have as much color variation as we would hope to be able to find, which we're very much looking at to improve this in terms of the interest of the color variation that we have on this. And it wouldn't be standing so much by itself as part of the landscaping, it would be a lot more trees surrounding it. So, that's this guy here. The next piece is this small accessory dwelling unit as well. This shed... This shed here is right here. So, it's hard to see. Anyone can come up and see if they want, but there's a dash line underneath this dark hatch that actually shows where this existing shed is. And this is this shed that I mentioned earlier that we think was built in the last 30 years just based on its construction. It's not listed as any sort of contributing building in the historic register. I have something... Oh, right. Basically, yeah, based on its framing, which is built out of saw and pressure-treated lumber, so we assume it's within the last 30 years. It is a new construction. There is the plan to take this down. The new accessory dwelling unit would contain one bedroom, one bathroom, and one kitchen. Its overall footprint is 17 feet by 17 feet, which is very small. It's basically enough space for us there. And then downstairs, it's a little tight, but a bathroom, sort of a kitchen, and just a sort of closet there. The idea with this house, which is very much a contemporary design, is interesting to follow the last public hearing. It's very much treated as a folly in the same way that the Astors probably would have built sort of outbuildings in their time, in the sense that it's, you know, it's sort of... Everything that they built was very modern. It was very of whatever was of the time. This building, very specifically, is even that much more tucked into what's already a very heavily wooded and sort of private sort of feeling area. It's obviously not visible from the public road. Our hope, and we haven't completely confirmed, is that it's also not really visible from either of the neighbors. And it doesn't really conflict with any of the remaining historic structures on the site in terms of its proximity to other buildings that are historic. This is basically... This small house is meant to be an escape, you know, to blend in to the landscape and it sort of disappear. And it's really meant to, from the inside, have an uninterrupted sort of view and experience of this landscape. And again, being on the Hudson River in the same way that the last project, there's a sort of interest to sort of take that view. And this is a building that's in, I believe it's in Norway, but it's a sort of... Similar to the other ideas, it's sort of echo of what we're looking to do here. So, they're shown as inspiration, but sort of an uninterrupted view is what you would sort of have from the inside. And from the outside, it's kind of meant to just, you know, kind of disappear, really just go away and not be there. It's almost intended to reflect the environment that's around it so that that's all you really see is more of that sort of wooded environment. That's it on this guy. The last sort of piece of... Or structure or piece of architecture is a... Is what is meant to sort of replace the barn here. There... Let's see. This proposed accessory storage unit entails the construction of new detached accessory storage barn. It's meant to replace an existing single-story frame shed horse barn. So, in terms of the footprint, they're very similar. We are... Sorry, the barn will include only one bathroom, which will have a toilet and utility sink only. So, it's very much just... It's a utility barn. It's for storage of equipment, storage of owner's, you know, private possessions, things like this. The barn footprint and overall size are being studied. There have been some suggestions to look at the overall square footage necessary as well as the overall height and sort of interruption into the landscape and the views and things like this. So, we are looking at that. Do want to get back to the board on that at some point soon. So, the exact sighting is also being looked at in terms of coordinating with the septic system, as it's a very difficult area to sort of work with for that. The location is sort of chosen... In these cases, the location were very much chosen to sort of, A, replace and not impact the landscape as much as possible, but also to sort of be hidden from view. This is just in a similar way to an existing barn. It's central to the site in terms of availability for, you know, getting equipment in and out and sort of maintaining the site. The finish of this barn was originally sort of meant to be the same as the other barn, but we're also suggesting this one be faced in the same sort of local stone, local field stone as well. The last sort of piece of the program is landscaping in general. I'm going to talk about both properties just because they're both... We can sort of split apart applications as we need to, but it is work that's on both of them, and some of it is tied in to both properties. In this case, I'm going to start from the beginning of the property. Ooh. There are two... There are two... There's one entrance to 195 River Road, which comes over here, and there's another entrance at Carmel Drive here. This is a shared road with the neighborhood to the south, and I believe that... Well, I know for a fact, this is the road being used as the main road, you know, for the property, I think out of reference and convenience, but also out of respect to the sort of heavy use of this road, which I think is a little more scum filled and sturdy. So, if there's more traffic, especially for the construction that will be happening, which that's... But it's also a very idyllic driveway. There was, you know, it was the main interest for the Ferncliff estate. There is a gatehouse that is up here. There's other hops and, you know, the old greenhouses as well on other property, all from the Astors and all of the original furniture. So, starting here in terms of the landscaping, he's interested in various cleaning this portion of the property up. There's a lot of... These are a lot of photographs that were taken around them. There's a lot of fallen trees already. There's a lot of trees that are sort of dead that are still kind of around, and there's a lot of underbrush that he wants to clean up and sort of... Sort of clean up basically the view shed of this, which I think affects the community in general in terms of the view from the road, and I think this was a very neglected property for a long time. There's a good amount of just cleaning up to do, and that's all he really wants to do. The comment is wrong. The portion of the application that deals with the site currently is just the grassing of this, and that was done as part of the portion of the environment as well in the So, coming along this main road, there is this Ferncliff Drive comes through here as well. There is no reason for the nursing home to the south to use this road. It is a private road. So, Robert would like to put a sort of a security gate here. It's not meant to be automatic, it's meant to be manual, so if there is emergencies or anything, or there is some reason that somebody comes in and has emergency to the nursing home, it could be operated by anybody at any time. It's mostly just a kind of way to keep traffic. A lot of people do enter Carmel Drive to come through to the nursing home, and the main interest in the nursing home is here. So, he'd like to kind of minimize that traffic, which I think will also help with some of the neighbors that enter and do have these things too, this portion of the property. A second security gate, which would be automatic and private, but definitely would have a safety net built in basically for emergency vehicles, which we placed here, which is right at the entrance to an old bridge, which was in one of the old postcards over there. So, we move in here, we have this cleaning up. We're adding two gates here, and... These are the security gates. This is sort of a... This is also a part of the gatehouse and the entrance gates as well. So, again, we're not replicating the entrance gates for the back end of the property, which I believe also is not feasible on the road, but just using that as a sort of, again, sort So, as we move sort of further into the site, there's a good amount of screening that's being proposed for the site. These... It's kind of hard to see. The darker dots here are existing trees. These are over 12 inches in diameter. These smaller darker dots are proposed trees, and there's a mix of species within here. The idea is to screen this sort of beautiful idyllic road from the nursing home, which is a... To screen from the nursing home. There is also some proposed screening here and here. When we look to... I have another quote, sorry, I'm going to read. When we look to a couple of the older... Again, the landscaping that was done by the Aylers originally, a quick little quote that says, "In the drive to the mansion, we went our way through a spacious archway of evergreens comprising the Norway spruce, the Austrian pine interspersed here and there with the graceful larch and the beautiful arbor of yti, and forming a fitting foreground to the left of the picture." The screening within this area is actually three out of those four species of evergreen. I think the problem nowadays is that there's a deer issue that they didn't have quite as badly in the mid to late 1800s. So, unfortunately, a few... Many of these trees have been sort of deer ravaged, and there is an interest to replace those trees with more deer-resistant evergreens. The new evergreens that are being installed, there is a change on one of the species that is not so deer-friendly, so we'll include that. is not so deer friendly, so we'll include that with all of our changes, but. And then the same thing within here. So, so with the screenings, the lighter dots were, were installed in the fall. There's only about six or eight that are being sort of installed here and they're basically filling in some gaps between some really old locust trees and some existing screening here. The idea is to, to, a little bit twofold, I think, I think some of these trees were originally installed because headlights coming in were sort of unfortunately pointing directly at the neighbor's house. And so there was an interest to, to try to mitigate that. The sort of second part of that that we're doing here is to just slightly curve this road here so that there's not such a straight in and straight over. So, so it, it mitigates a little bit, it's not 100%, but also the screening is meant to help that as well. The screening in here basically is, the full goal of that is to hide this building completely from everyone, including Robert, who's really not that interested in seeing it from his own house. The, we originally had proposed to remove a portion of this road, but after some poignant comments, it was realized that this is an old carriage road and that actually shouldn't be touched. Functionally, that he doesn't need to remove it, he just thought it was not serving any purpose because it used to connect onto the property when there were two properties. It used to connect right in through here. So it didn't seem to serve a functional need, but if this is historical value, by all means, there's, there's no need to remove it if it's not broken. I think. In general, there's, there's driveway maintenance proposed all throughout. There's a lot of potholes. There's some areas of sort of not quite asphalt, but hardscape that are sort of in disrepair that, that just need to be cleaned up. There are two septic locations being proposed. One septic field here that is to serve the new pool pavilion, the barn and the, the guest house, the accessory dwelling unit over here. There is already an existing leach field and reserve for the main house, which is to its capacity, hence the proposal for a new septic system. There's also a septic system proposed in here, maybe originally to serve for the, as well as the sink and toilet in the barn. One last item, there is a, there is a sort of historic path that the Astors used to sort of make their way down to the riverfront. That's been, I wouldn't say restored, but it's, it's kind of still intact. There is a culvert ditch that sort of stops that path right now, that's been sort of formed over the years. So there's a proposal to put in a blue stone sort of slab that will serve as a bridge between those two portions.
Is the stream over the right side of the road?
There is, oh, there's a cove in here. So the, the railroad is here and the Astro Cove is, is, fills in here. So this is the edge of the embankment basically, and then the cove fills in here.
There you go, that's the spirit.
Along here? Oh, I don't know about that. I'd have to, is it, I'd have to, I don't know anything about it, I'd have to look into that.
Yeah, I'm sure.
I don't know about that. There is, there is a bridge, as this path continues through, there's a bridge, but it's, it's now on the next property. So the path does actually continue, continue between the two properties in this case. And so, so there's actually two paths. There's this path, you know, this is the old carriage road. There's a path that sort of leads off, that's a foot trail. There's also a path down in here, which I don't actually show as a path.
You've also some of these too, yeah.
It's sort of, the hill is so steep, it's, it's kind of hard to show.
Are we, are we sort of?
Those are the main points.
Sort of done?
I'm done.
Sort of done? Okay. A couple of procedural things we have to do. First of all, Joni, just assure that we have noticing and everything was, is all taken care of. And the county, I know, got back saying matter of local interest. Correct. The Conservation Advisory Board, any comments they wish to make at this point in time?
He's left.
He's left, so I guess that means no. Town historian, any comments you wish to make at this point?
Someone that's maybe have more appropriate comments, but just run through the ones that I have. The teahouse design was inspired by the garden pavilion at Versailles. It was originally accompanied by a formal garden, as you pointed out. Many of the mansions at Newport also have teahouse structures as accessories for their estates. This teahouse was designed in 1948. David Plaville-Gourret was credited with it, but actually the blueprints are signed by Frenes and Taylor because they were actual architects, whereas he was only the designer. The building underwent the renovations in 2008, which pretty much obliterated the original And it contained 5,295 square feet and now that it's been renovated. I understand that the estickle has been taken off and that certainly does increase the, the look of the, the house. Appreciate that work having been done. The pavilion, which will phrase toward the south and Astor Court, will have a hexagonal design with the arched windows reminiscent of the original teahouse design. And I'll compliment you on that addition to the estate. Glass house that's proposed to replace the shed, I believe is to have a stone foundation. One of the renderings I had seen had poles.
Correct, correct. It's a glass, yeah, it's a, it's a stone foundation.
Stone foundation. I think that would be much better. And so I'm hoping that, that there will be enough screening around that. I'm a little confused as to how many accessory dwelling units and accessory, like this barn two that has septic and does, at present time, just has a half bath. Are they intending to place a full? At one time, I had heard that they were planning to have that, a caretaker's residence there.
Earlier on, it was, and then we found in the code that were, without variance, they said restricted to three, essentially, but I mean, it's more, so Robert would have to have to.
I see, okay. And then I also noted that the site plan calls for many changes in the estate road system. However, it's not desirable to obliterate the evidence of the original roads and you've Care will have to be taken in assessing the detrimental effects of gates and fences. I'm not too clear on how that's going to all turn out. And the landscaping, as you mentioned, there is a deer problem so that there has to be some effort to be able to protect the landscaping. There was some thing that I had seen that used a lot of ivy on the house and the deer love that, so.
Yes. It's supposed to be, it's a, 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 it's[1242.75]
Yes.
So that Phase One is just the literature search. So you've moved beyond Phase One into Phase Two.
Okay, I might have misunderstood. My understanding was that the shovel test that they were doing was Phase One. If that's Phase Two.
It's Phase Two.
Yeah, they're definitely digging. That's Phase Two. That's fine.
Okay, the next thing I was asked for was the Town Waterfront Advisory Committee, but I understand they've left the building, so we'll just move right along to the succinct observations by the delegated planning board members who did the site visit.
Well, a lot of the things that came up in our site visit have been talked about, but I'll just run through them. Obviously, we were talking to you about going back and looking at your plant choice material choices because clearly what's been happening there isn't working and isn't likely to work. So, you know, there's this balance between getting the screening in that you want with the appropriate plant material that's going to do it and then last because what's there, I would characterize it as mostly gone at this point. You know, it's been nibbled away so high that it's not effectively doing anything for you or for the neighbors. We mentioned the archaeology, and we appreciate you jumping right on that. It's a sensitive area, and so, you know, we'll be waiting to hear what we get back from that. Whether it's going to impact locations of things remains to be seen. I appreciate your talking about the road system and following up on that because the drives are an important part of that original landscape design, and we want to see that protected. And I think we talked in the field about, you know, particularly the section between the tee house and the aster quartz. You know, I'm not particularly interested in seeing it continue to be paved or surfaced in any way, but I don't want the road bed removed so that it's always there as evidence. I think we've got some questions still that we need to resolve. We've got some follow-up questions about the setback distances in barn number two. I think it's cited on your plans too close to the property line, so we're going to have to go back and look at that. It's not a very wide area in there, so I think the sighting of that, we've got to look at a second time. And then the last thing that hasn't been mentioned that I think is going to be important going forward is the mitigation plan that I don't believe is in place after the removal of the trees on the bank. And we did talk in the field there with the C A B about some work that's been accomplished. I don't think we feel it's enough work. I think we haven't talked about replanting of significant trees. I'm not sure that the shrubs that were put in there will last any longer than the other plant material that's in place. And, you know, we're concerned about that bank being stabilized. It's nice to have the view, but too much was lost in that removal, and we really want to build into the plan a much more comprehensive mitigation plan for the slope. Art and Bob were there. Is there anything?
Yeah, I don't think we gave him a specific mitigation that we're exactly what we're looking for.
No, I think it's got to be worked out as part of this overall.
But I think the applicant has been, you know, open and been working diligently to be asking, you know, responding to what we've asked for, and I appreciate that.
But we weren't, I don't think we've been really clear. I mean, a lot of the things came up in other presentations, but not the slope mitigation part of what we want to see done. So that is one additional aspect that I think is important. Art?
I think you've wonderfully summarized the discussion in the field, and I believe that I brought up independently the slope stabilization issue at some point in time. There does need to be substantially more planting along that bank of substantially larger species and type of material.
I know another point that I think I conveyed to you, and I think it's going to be helpful. I think we've been sort of talking to that today, is that if you can show and possibly do as an overlay the original landscape plan as best known, the original drives, the original carriage trails, things like that that the asters had, and how you're integrating your new design into that historic landscape. Now, you keep speaking about trying to emphasize characteristics of the historic landscape, but the only way you can really do it is if you know what that was, at least what the topography was, how it was developed, and how your plans today are going to integrate into that. I think that'd be very helpful for us to see that. Other members of the planning board. Members of the public here to speak tonight.
Will you be continuing the public hearing?
Yes, yes.
Because we haven't really had a chance to take a look at the changes.
Yes, and there's a lot more development yet to go. I guess there are a couple of things I would mention. All right. It's a Type One action under seeker, which, and the planning board and the Z B A have to coordinate on that. The planning board will be doing the seeker review. At the Wednesday Z B A meeting, the plan, the Z B A did not accept the application for the one variance, the 1,500 square feet, and they're still awaiting the other two variance requests. So at the present time, there is nothing before the Z B A in terms of those three variances, and that has to occur. Clearly, the Z B A cannot act on variances as far as approval or disapproval until the planning board has completed the seeker process. And it seems there's still a good bit of information we require before we're going to be comfortable doing that. I know that we're waiting for our engineer to respond to the SWIP plan that was developed. I think there's a lot of landscaping issues that we really need to see. I mean, that's going to be very key to how this property is developed and actually preserving, which you say you want to preserve. The only way to do it is to know what was there and how you're going to work with that and work into that. So I think that's a very important aspect of it also. The archaeology is key, and that's going to, I think, help you to develop an idea of what was there and how you're going to go forward. I think, given what we've found for plans for many other aspects of the aster estate, there may well be more detailed information about this particular part of the aster estate than perhaps you've been able to get a hold of at this point, which will also be very, very helpful, I think. That's about all I had to say to try and be succinct. I think the thing to do is to continue this public hearing, and until...
The question is, when will the applicant have the additional information available?
I think we'll be able to accommodate a day of May 5th and have material to you in advance and make it available to the neighbor for the public, so I think we think that's sufficient.
How much in advance?
I'm sorry?
How much in advance?
How much, yeah, how much in advance do you think that's going to be possible to do?
I'd like to give you guys at least two weeks. Is that...
Yeah, we'd love to have two weeks, yeah.
That would be, that's the typical submission requirement, two weeks.
That's what I understood it to be. So that's what we're aiming for.
And that kind of gives you guys two weeks. Okay.
A lot of this, as you can see, is sort of underway in terms of the mutations that are there. So based on comments we were waiting to submit, so that there's...
Okay.
You don't anticipate having your archaeology report by Friday?
I think in two weeks, we, well, we're going to be close. We're going to be close.
It may or may not, but I think we'll have much more specific information on design details of the buildings who are looking at changing the setback of barn two, height and change. So I think when we have a lot of historic information that Christopher has generated about the estate plan and working on more details about the slope.
That'd be very helpful.
So I think we will have significant additional information for you in two weeks. The archaeology depends fairly on what the interim results are.
Sure.
And the other thing, get the applications to the Z B A. They meet every two weeks. I mean, theoretically, the planning board takes up an application if variances are needed, and the variances could be granted so that we can proceed with it. But right now, since there's nothing before the Z B A, it gets a little complicated.
And we don't want that to delay anything, but at the same time, we didn't want to unduly take the Z B A's time. And as we're relooking at some of the program here, that might impact... So we've got a lot of moving pieces that we're trying to mesh together. We certainly hear you, and we want to move the processes.
And that brings up another, obviously, key issue. Are you or are you not going to consolidate the two properties?
There's no application.
No, there isn't at this point, but I know that's one reason the Z B A wasn't comfortable going forward because the discussion at that night was that that was a possibility, and so they need to know also.
Right, right. So that's on the critical half for decision-making. But as you hinted out, while we're trying to solidify the program, respond to comments we've heard about the surface material of the buildings, the location, the height of the buildings, we also have a pending archaeology issue which could conceivably relocate some of it.
Yes, it could.
Could shift some of it. So, but in any event, I don't think we'd be wasting the board's time or the board's time if we said May 5th, because I think we will have significant additional information for you at that time.
That'd be very helpful, definitely. Anyone else on the board, anything I want to say right now, other than I want to go home?
They want to say adjourn, but they can't.
No.
You're halfway through the agenda.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
By the number of items, you're halfway through the agenda.
Anyway, before anyone gets really depressed, I'd like to hear a motion to continue this public hearing to May 5th.
Seven o'clock, call it.
Could I ask three quick points?
Yes.
Some, just some clarifications, and maybe there are things that you need to get to us, just so I understand how to move forward. The siding with the barn, is that something you'll get, the sort of the second one that's 20 feet off right now? Is that something you'll get back to us on?
I will get to that tomorrow.
Okay. The mitigation plan, as a quick note, part of the mitigation plan included a survey by an engineer to sort of give the present state of the sort of hillside and what was going on. We've asked for a second report now that it's where we are, so I anticipate submitting that to you as well, which I hope will help to sort of give us a sense of, you know, you're saying there's a sense that there needs to be substantially more, and so I kind of need a sense of how to react to that in terms of what are we doing. So we'll get the report back, which I think will help. But then I suppose that's just a further discussion once we submit that report to you.
I would imagine that will be a further discussion. Exactly, yes.
Okay. And then the last item is, oh, that's nothing. Okay.
Oh, okay. Is there any other public comment tonight? The meeting is going to be continued. Hearing none. Could I hear a motion to continue the public hearing to May 5th at?
Call it seven.
Seven? Seven. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Thank you. Moving rapidly along. Next item.
New business items and then go to resolutions.
We're going to go to resolutions after we do these.
Yep.
John Phillips, 2867 New York State Route 9G, special use permit and site plan. Initial presentation of applications for special use permit and site plan review and approval in the matter of a proposed detached accessory dwelling in the rural countryside RC 5 and water resource overlay district. Planning board review and processing is made timely under town code 125 zoning and seeker. Approved.
Accept. Diagram of the land.
For sharing.
And septic system is approved through the board of health providing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, everybody, thank you.
We see a front page just in front of the house. Second page, you guys. Third page, you've got a 52, 512385. That's the largest, almost 19 acres. My son has this house right here. Right there, he's already going, Mrs....
Accessory dwelling, free bedrooms?
And so it goes over 100 feet from that line to the...
I don't know that it gives any limitation on it. He's saying, in that one, in an accessory dwelling? I don't know that it had a kind of limitation on it.
And the reason why I didn't want to subdivide, we all didn't want to subdivide it, is because I don't, we don't want anything touched in the back because there's a beautiful swamp back there with weeds, swans, and everything. It's a beautiful scenery. So if we subdivide it, then if something happens to my wife and I, oh, go right to Michael, this way will stay as is. That's very important. That's it. And then the last two pages is Dave Ryder did the septic system, first pass and everything. So we could have that all done. That's going to improve. Just waiting for you all. So, and the house is over 100 feet from the line.
Yes, it means the setbacks and all. Okay. Any questions? Art?
You're okay.
Okay. We're okay? I think we have a resolution?
You got it there.
Okay.
And that's my wife's share.
We'll try to get you on earlier next time. Okay. The town of Rhinebeck Planning Board, upon review by the zoning enforcement officer hereby access follows in the matter of the March 17th, 2014, application by John Phillips under town code chapter 125 zoning for special use permit under the district schedule of use regulations in Article 5, Section 12545, and Article 6, Section 12568E, and related site plan review and approval in the matter of a proposed construction for a 1352 square foot detached accessory dwelling unit on a single-family residential premise, 18.39 acre parcel on Route 9G in the rural countryside RC 5 district and water resource overlay district. All is depicted or otherwise described within a site plan and building plan prepared by, and we have that right here. We'll fill that in and date it. And short E A F Part One, an agricultural data statement prepared by the applicant and subject to area variances to, one, authorize a detached accessory dwelling unit of 1352 square feet instead of the maximum 900 otherwise permitted, and, two, grant relief from the maximum permitted standard of a total of 1,500 square feet in accessory structures on a residential premises set forth within the Z B A's resolution of March 4th, March 5th, 2014, in the matter of case 851. One, waives the conduct of a separate sketch plan conference and accepts the applications as adequate for commencing review by the planning board, the board's consultants, and the public. Classifies the proposed action as a Type Two action under seeker for which further environmental quality review is precluded. Schedules a combined public hearing as set forth within the annexed notice of public hearing on the applications for May 5th, 2014 at?
7:10.
7:10. 7:10 P M. And directs the clerk to undertake, on or otherwise caused noticing and posting thereof, in strict accordance with the provisions of Town Code Chapter 125 zoning, Sections 12566 and 12577. Further directs the planning board clerk to circulate the agricultural data statement in a manner prescribed within New York's Agriculture and Markets Law. Delegates planning board members, who wants to go?
I'll go.
Richard?
I'll go.
And Jesse. Okay. I'm going to write this down so I can read it this time. And Jesse, to conduct a field visit to the project site and report their observations at the time of public hearing. Six, refers the applications to the town conservation advisory board for review and comment in consideration of environmental factors. Refers the applications for special use permit and site plan review and approval to the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development for U and advisory opinion pursuant to the general requirements of Section 239I and M of the General Municipal Law. Eight, requests further technical review of the applications by the town's planning consultant and without prejudice or requirement for careful consideration by the planning board. If any input that arises through the continuing review process as set forth above, authorizes the planning consultant to prepare the working draft for consideration by the planning board when timely for of a conditional approval resolution and incorporated findings. Second?
Sorry.
Any discussion? All in favor? Very good. Okay. You're going to coordinate with Jesse and Richard on the site visit, and you're going to show up here on May 5th at 7:10 for your public hearing, which will probably be more like 9:20, but, you know, 7:10 is when it's scheduled. And I think we're good to go. And I hope you enjoyed tonight's proceedings.
You learned that you're going to come much later next time, right?
Yeah. Yeah, bring a takeout dinner. Okay.
1652.
Well, let's see.
5018, 2016? Yes.
Okay. Well, let's see what we can do with this. Ruby Palmer, agent for John Nathan, 32 Kelly Street, special use permit and site plan. Initial presentation of applications for special use permit and site plan review and approval in the matter of a proposed addition to an existing single-family dwelling in the Rhine Cliff Hamlet and Rhine Cliff Overlay District, the Hudson River National Historic Landmarks District, and the town's L W R A. Planning board review and processing is made timely under town code chapter 125 zoning and seeker. What do we have here?
Well, this is a young woman we met with who's wanting to put the mudroom on the very small mudroom.
It's a 96 square foot mudroom attached to an existing residence in Rhine Cliff. And as Warren Smith would say, it's one of those cases that is subject to several reviews just because it's in Rhine Cliff.
Right. There really didn't seem to be any issues with it whatsoever when we went over it. And it's just, I think, you know, I'd like to go to bed so I can really sympathize. I have a resolution for you?
Does it block any views?
No.
And make it 7:20 on that day, Michael.
Okay. Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board, upon review by the zoning enforcement officer, hereby access follows in the matter of the, on the March 24th, 2014, applications by Ruby Palmer, as agent for John Nathan, for special use permit under town code chapter 125 zoning, Sections 12569 and 125... Which one is that? Is that the overlay or is that the, within 1,000 feet or something?
Yes, it's within 1,000 feet.
Okay, I'll just put 1,000 there for now. I'll look at that. And related site plan review and approval in the matter of a proposed 96-foot, square foot addition to an existing single-family dwelling on, and I'll get the tax map parcel number, at 32 Kelly Street in the Rhine Cliff Hamlet and Rhine Cliff Overlay Districts, the Hudson River National Historic Landmark District, and the town's L W R A. All is depicted or otherwise described within building plans by Brian Walker, architect, dated March 23rd, 2014, and subject to a full E A F Part One and other required submissions. Waives the conduct of a separate sketch plan conference and accepts the applications as adequate for commencing review by the planning board, the board's consultants, and the public. Two, classifies the proposed action as a Type Two action under seeker for which further environmentally, environmental quality review is precluded. Three, schedules a public hearing as set forth within the annexed notice of public hearing on the applications for Monday, May 5th, 2014, at 7:20 P M. And directs the clerk to undertake, on or otherwise caused noticing and posting thereof, in strict accordance with the provisions of Town Code Chapter 125 zoning, Sections 12566 and 12577. Delegates planning board members, who wants to go to Rhine Cliff? Okay, I'll go to Rhine Cliff. Who else wants to go to Rhine Cliff? Woody, okay. We can get coffee and a bagel on the way. To conduct a field visit to the project site and report their observation at time of public hearing. Five, refers the applications to the town conservation advisory board for review and comment in consideration of environmental factors. Refers the applications to the town's waterfront advisory committee for review and comment in consideration of the consistent of the town coastal policies. Seven, refers the application to the town historian for review and comment.
All of which is required by the ordinance.
Refers the applications for special use permit and site plan review and approval to the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development for U and advisory opinion pursuant to the requirements of Sections 239I and M of the General Municipal Law. Nine, requests further technical review of the applications by the town's planning consultant and without prejudice or requirement for careful consideration by the planning board. If any input that arises through the continuing review process as set forth above, authorizes the planning consultant to prepare a working draft for consideration by the planning board when timely in a conditional approval resolution with incorporated findings. Could I hear a resolution? A second. Anyone want to say anything else? All in favor? All righty. I don't know.
You do know.
I don't, I do? Oh.
You do.
What?
Oh, I'm sorry to hear that. AT&amp;T Mobility, I'd like to get on to, that's, okay, okay, no, we're good here. Okay, this AT&amp;T Mobility thing, as, basically, as you know, there are now four pending applications for cell towers in the town of Rhinebeck. It is not unusual for an applicant to deal with someone in terms of, in this case, historic issues, things like that, to ask for comment. I think what we would probably want to do, and I discussed this with Art, and I think he's absolutely right, is say, yeah, we're involved, we are concerned about the historic things, we're going to have comment. We don't have an application yet, so it would be premature, I think, for us to make any comment, anything other than to tell them, yes, we are concerned, and yes, you'll be hearing from us. And we'll do it that way. So we'll write something up and zip it off if that's okay with all y'all.
Zip it off.
Okay. Charles Wiles and Ralph Catella, this is a time extension for conditions that we gave them to meet the conditions we gave them before for that subdivision. Upon consideration of February 24th, 2014, request for time extension submitted by Charles Wiles in the matter of the Charles Wiles-Ralph Catella Minor Subdivision Lotline Alteration in the Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board hereby extends for a period of 180 calendar days from March 15th, 2014 to September 11th, 2014, the deadline set forth within the planning board's resolution of September 16th, 2014, wherein plat approval, subject to timely satisfaction of conditions and or requirements, was granted. Was that, was that, was that a motion?
What is the condition that they're unable to?
Among other things, consolidation deeds. There was a situation of annexation of parcels.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
They're swapping a couple.
Right. They need that, and they need a stamp by the health department on the drawing saying it's a non-jurisdictional and things of that sort, so.
Of no concern really whatsoever.
No, no big issues, yeah.
Oh, she's going to sue me?
Maybe.
Oh, cool. Could I hear a motion? Could I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Moving right along. The resolutions you have before us from the Z B A, they both referred, the first two refer to use variances. The second one, I think, I'm not sure, the Z B A took that up, the Z B A took that one. Why don't we start with the third one first? I think it's the easiest. Basically, Paul Becker, what he's asking for is he wants to build a garage on property which already has an accessory barn, an existing barn. It has three floors in it, although they're not necessarily usable, and he wants to take them out, but he hasn't done it yet. If he took them out, he wouldn't have to have this, the Z B A variance because he would not have excessive over 1,500 square feet with a garage. So basically, it's sort of one of those things which gross square footage because of the floors has created the problem. It certainly has the footprint of the structures themselves. I was at the Z B A meeting. There was no objections. No one else had any concerns or anything like that. I must admit, I didn't see any problems with it either. I'll read you what Art has drafted here and see what y'all think. The Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board has reviewed the application for area variance submitted by Paul Becker, seeking authorization for increase in maximum permitted floor area of accessory structures from 1,500 square feet to 2,536 square feet initially and 2,056 square feet ultimately, so as to permit the maintenance and later modification of existing barn and construction of a new garage on a residential premise of 33 Cedar Heights Road in the RC 5 district. The initial is that he can't, isn't taking the floor out now, but he intends to take this floor out of this existing barn building. That's why you're seeing the roughly 500 square foot reduction ultimately. While the planning board notes the requested variance is certainly not de minimis, being initially a 69% increase and ultimately a 37% increase from the prescribed maximum standard, the planning board believes, one, the granted requested area variance and ensuing improvements will not create any significant planning or environmental issues. Two, should the variance be granted by the Z B A, implementation of the two-stage proposal set forth by the applicant, which effectively reduces the extent of area variance and a timeframe for its completion, should be incorporated as a requirement of the Z B A's decision. And three, the Z B A should consider both this input and further rely upon its own further study of the facts and deciding the application in accordance with the criteria and procedures set forth in Town Code Chapter 125, Sections 125, 124C and D. Could I hear a motion to approve? A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Okay. The Z B A referral for Sophia Papa Constantis. I'm not being able to see these very well anymore. This is the site that was the restaurant Diaspora, and then it was a sushi restaurant before that. Those of us who remember way back when, the Longhorn Saloon back then.
Oh, yeah. There was a stop on the way home. What's the Rolling Rock before that?
It was like, you know, I remember, I remember there was a bachelor party there. Never mind, but anyway. So the fact of the matter is, this place has been a eatery of some sort since time immemorial, and whatever the word is. And they have done so much work on it to basically make it a restaurant. It would be very difficult. I can't, don't know what else you could really do with this structure out there. I'm not aware of any issues with it, well, maybe when it was the Longhorn Saloon, but certainly not since it was a restaurant, any problems that anyone had any objections or anything like that. I think they have, they pretty well had proved to the satisfaction of the Z B A that there was definitely a financial hardship here in terms of trying to sell it for any other use. So this one, a use variance is not easy to get, but this is one of those cases where it had always been a restaurant, and it seems not inappropriate that it might be able to continue as one. This would just allow the use... This would just allow the use that they don't have anyone buying it yet with a specific restaurant in mind. But this would just allow someone to buy it as a restaurant, and then they would have to come before the planning board for special use permit and site plan.
Let's move on.
Okay. How about all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. This last one is.
Is distinguished from the prior one.
Right.
The Papa Costantis application is an appropriate application for a use variance in that it deals with a request for a specific use that is permitted within zoning law but not in that particular district.
Right.
This next application asks for authorization of commercial use, kind of generically asks for authorization of commercial use. That is not a use specifically defined in the, in the zoning law. An application for a use variance has to be to a specific use as authorized at some location within the community within the zoning law.
Take it back.
Right. And what currently is in there is a therapy, massage sort of type of a facility, and I guess they've done a lot of renovation, and they've been working it that way. My own view is that they wanted the use variance they'd be asking for to be for personal services not listed elsewhere. My suggestion would be to the planning board that, just as Art said, or as Jesse said, send it back saying, you know, we need a specific use. There's no such thing as commercial use. I mean, in terms of a.
And it goes back to zoning.
It goes back to the ZBA.
Then it comes back to us?
Right.
Then it comes back to us?
Then it would come back to us again.
Yeah.
But that's, I don't think there's any way around that.
Is this the one, case 859?
Yes.
Would just be this. Over the years, it's had several.
It has. Oh, yeah.
Were you talking about this one right here?
Right, the zoning one.
Yeah, this has always been a commercial use place because I, I asked about that a long time ago, and apparently they've always had trouble with the town, too.
Yeah, well, what they did is they got approval to have a telephone service there, and then they just, when the telephone service moved out, they never came back, they had all sorts of different, an antique store, or this and a that, and they never came back to get approval.
But the town really dropped the ball by, they should have enforced it.
There's a whole, yeah.
Right.
I can, boy, the drop, we got a lot of dropped balls.
So we should have, basically, they just need to specify stuff.
I think they need to specify. They've provided a lot of data to the ZBA. I think they may have the financial, the hardship thing down, but they need to have a specific use that they're asking for. So we'll send that back to the ZBA?
Yep.
Okay. We now have Art. Hi there, Jonathan.
You have, you have, you have the Rosen, you have to act on, at this point, the Rosenbloom application, the Chirapco application, and the Grassmere application.
Giuliano.
Giuliano, we handled Giuliano.
Yeah, we did that one because we could. Okay. We're going to go first to, we're going to go first to.
Page seven.
Page.
It's actually, the resolution is on page.
Page eight.
Page 10.
Page 10?
Yes.
What are the municipal having to read all this?
Yes. What are the municipal having to read all this?
You don't have to read all this.
I don't have to? Okay, guys?
You should read, you should, what you should read, let's summarize this, Michael.
Okay.
The bottom line is the Rosenbloom Suk Tankar applications are for, they're an application for certificate of demolition or removal, which was discussed by Architect Smith during the public hearing, an application for special permits to deal with the work within the Rhine Cliff Overlay District, and an application for site plan review that's required in every case of an application for special permit. The resolution basically finds that the standards for grant of an application for certificate of, for certificate of demolition have been met. They were very well detailed in the architect's submission, and there's a finding here on the part of the planning board that the standards for development within the Rhine Cliff District and within 1,000 feet of the Hudson River are, are met. And that essentially, subject to some ministerial conditions like making sure that all fees have been paid, et cetera, the chair is authorized to stamp the site plan.
Could I hear a motion? Could I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. I'm not even going to ask for further discussion because you wouldn't know what the hell you're talking about because I don't either. So I'll just poll the board. Bob?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Jesse?
Aye.
Melody?
Aye.
Woody?
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Okay.
Chirapco.
Chirapco. This is another one. You had a very detailed discussion, I think, three times before this board about what he's doing with the old schoolhouse there. I don't think there are any issues, I don't think there are any problems. I think, I don't think there was any, any worries there.
And this is, and this is simply, it's simply a, an approval of an application for site plan approval.
Exactly.
Triggered by the fact that any improvement within the landmarks district requires site plan approval by the, by the planning board.
Exactly.
There are no non-ministerial, non-ministerial conditions attached to this, to this resolution.
Could I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. I will poll the board. Woody?
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Jesse?
Aye.
Melody?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Okay. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? No, no, wouldn't do that to you. Okay. All right now. We have one more thing to do.
This one, Michael, for the record, because of the importance of this, I would read the non-italicized portions of the draft resolution. The italicized portions are all excerpts from the finding statement that have been incorporated into this resolution describing the project, describing the various permits and approvals that are required, et cetera. But the non-italicized portions are what should be read.
And this is the.
The annex document, the LWRPC, RP Consistency Review Paper doesn't need to be read either because it basically follows the finding statement, simply reorders the statement of, the statement of policies, 1 through 37 or whatever.
And we're covering it here anyway, issuing a statement of consistency under this resolution.
The resolution covers it.
This is just an annex document.
It's the annex document.
Okay.
And the only limitation within that statement of consistency is that, as pointed out in the finding statement, there'll be a revisiting by the planning board with the CAB of the detailed stormwater plan when it, when it comes into part of the site plan process.
Okay. All righty then. Now let me see how fast I can get through this one. Whereas the resolution, this resolution by the town of Rhinebeck Planning Board addresses the application by Grassmere Mench LLC applicant for special use permit under Town Code Chapter 125 zoning, Article 3, Use Regulations, Section 12520, District Schedule of Use Regulations and Article 6, Special Use Permit Requirements, Section 12567, Special Standard, General Standards in Section 12568, Specific Standards for Certain Uses, Section MM Country In 2, as submitted on July 1st, 2013, and amended on March 3rd, 2014, for a project known as the Grassmere Farm Hotel Development Project or Development. The effect of the amendment was to both incorporate by the application the alternative site plan set forth by the applicant in response to comments received by the planning board during public and agency review of a draft generic EIS, and declare by the planning board to be the preferred or project alternative, preferred or project alternative in the final generic EIS, and to more specifically depict the boundaries of the project site as set forth on drawing SK 2.0, as reviewed and found acceptable by the planning board during a subdivision sketch plan conference on February 18th, 2013. The, should that be 14? Did we do that? About the set forth drawing?
2014.
2014. 2014, yeah. Okay.
That's why, that's why you read resolutions.
Yeah, well, it's not like I ever see most of these things off. The application for special use for Country In 2 is one of a substantial number of permits, approvals, and compliance determinations from the town planning board and other local, county, and state agencies, which constitute the proposed action classified as a type 1 action under seeker, and being the subject of coordinating environmental quality review conducted by the town planning board in its role as duly designated lead agency under seeker. Prior to acceptance of the amended application for especially, for special use permit for authorization of the Country In 2, the below-key milestones in the conduct of coordinated environmental review of the potential impacts of the proposed Grassmere Farm Hotel Development on natural and man-made resources have occurred, and I will list them, preparation of a draft environmental impact statement by the applicant in accordance with the DG EIS scope issued by the planning board. Acceptance by the planning board of the DG EIS on October 23rd, 2013 is adequate for public and agency review based upon the DG EIS scope and the requirement in Article 8, the Environmental Conservation Law, and six, Art 1, Art 617 NYC double R. Issuance by the planning board of a notice of completion of DG EIS and conduct of DG EIS public hearing on November 18th, 2013, with provisions for continuing period for receipt of written comment through December 2nd, 2013. Review of the proposed development and recommendation by the town's waterfront advisory committee as to the consistency of the proposed development, the coastal policies set forth within the town's LWRP during the time period of the planning board's preparation of the final generic environmental impact statement. Issuance of a notice of completion of the FG EIS by the planning board on February 3rd, 2014, setting forth opportunity for public consideration and submission of written comments. Adoption of a finding statement by the planning board on March 3rd, 2014. The Grassmere Farm Hotel Development as subject of the application for special use permit for Country In 2, except in the matter of the number of lodging units which are limited to a maximum of 100 units under the present application without prejudice to the possible later application for the 10% density bonus, bonus density set forth within Town Code Chapter 125 is described in the following below verbatim except excerpt from the finding statement.
Skip the next five pages.
All right.
That's the verbatim excerpt describing the project.
I feel better already.
Page 18.
I feel better already. Upon accepting the amended application for special use permit for authorization of Country In 2, the town planning board scheduled to require public hearing for April 7th, 2014, and provided for the noticing publication and posting thereof in accordance with Town Code Chapter 125, Section 12566, referred the application to the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development in accordance with Section 239 of the General Municipal Law and to the Town Conservation Advisory Board in accordance with Town Code Chapter 9, and circulated the required agricultural data statement in accordance with the New York State Ag and Markets Law. Now therefore be it resolved, the town of Rhinebeck Planning Board upon conduct of public hearing and with due consideration of input received at the public hearing and in response to the referrals made, hereby access follows in the matter of the July 1st, 2013, application by Mench Grassmere LLC applicant for special use permit under Town Code Chapter 125 zoning, Article 3, Use Regulations, Section 12520, District Schedule of Use Regulations, and Article 6, Special Use Permit Requirements, Section 12567, General Standards and Section 12568, Specific Standards for Certain Uses, Subsection Double M, Country In 2, as submitted on July 1st, 2013, and amended on March 3rd, 2014, for a project known as the Grassmere Farm Hotel Development Project or Development as explicitly described, as explicitly above described. One, in accordance with the requirements of Town Code Chapter 118, waterfront consistency review, that examination be conducted of the relationship of a proposed project to the coastal policies set forth within the town's LWRP prior to acting on any required, requested permit, approval, or other compliance determination for a project in the LWRA. Issuance the annex statement of consistency with coastal policies in the matter of the Grassmere Farm Hotel Development Country In 2, and that's that other thing.
Twelve-page thing.
Two, deems the proposed Country In 2 as explicitly described above to be consistent with the general standards for all special use permit uses set forth within Article 6, Section 12567 of the Town Code, Chapter 125 zoning. Three, further deems as detailed below through verbatim excerpt from the finding statement the proposed Country In 2 to be consistent with the specific standards for certain uses, more specifically those set forth within Article 6, Section 125-68, Section Double M in the matter of a Country In 2. And zipping right along.
Skip the next six pages.
I expect you to read all of these when you get home.
Top of page 13, go to next.
Okay. Four, approves the application for special use permit for authorization of a Country In 2 as explicitly described above under Town Code Chapter 125 zoning, Article 3, Use Regulations, Section 12520, District Schedule of Use Regulations, and Article 6, Special Use Permit Requirements, Section 12567, General Standards and Section 12568, Specific Standards for Certain Uses, Subsection Double M, Country In 2, as explicitly described above, subject to satisfaction of each of the below conditions and or requirements within six calendar months of this resolution as provided within, provided with Section 125-66J expiration of special use permit, which period may be extended for a maximum period of one additional year for a total of 18 months from the date of this resolution, either through a single extension of one calendar year or the combination of two or more extensions upon written request prior to expiration. A, securing site plan approval from the town planning board and as remaining outstanding and to the extent deemed pertinent by the planning board upon conduct of the site plan review and approval process, each of the other permits, approvals, and/or compliance determinations from the town planning board and other local, county, and state agencies set forth as matters to be decided in the below verbatim excerpt from the finding statement otherwise discussed earlier in this resolution in the matter of revisiting coastal policies 33 and 37.
Next three pages recite all of those other approvals that are required. You've got to be on page 18.
Okay.
Payment of any outstanding fees.
These are the good ones. Payment of any outstanding fees or reimbursable amounts due to the town of Rhinebeck with respect to review and processing of this application of the town's fee schedule and executed escrow agreement. Could I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second, discussion. I will poll the board. Woody? Sharon?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Jesse?
Aye.
Melody?
Aye.
And I will vote aye. Now then.
I think, is it Woody time?
It's Woody time.
No, it's my, good board. Woody?
Woody time.
Do I hear a second? All in favor?
Aye.